Good evening, and the Wakefield School Committee meeting of Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And start by pledging allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we will begin with our mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And as we always do, we'd like to start the meeting open for any public comment. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Katie Pritchard. I live at 534 Lowell Street, and I was here at the last meeting to speak in support of the teachers, and my goal is the same today. I wanted to reiterate my gratitude for the efforts that you guys are putting in to bring this to a resolution, and also emphasize my eagerness to get a contract resolved for our teachers. A few, I mean, years ago when my children started at the Doll Bear, they had a parent forum, and they asked us what our priorities were for our children's education. And the thing that I expressed was that I really wanted my children to be in a school system where they were taught to love learning. I wanted them to be eager to go to school, and I wanted there to be passion and fire in that learning experience. And I feel so blessed that that has been the experience of all three of my children, who are very unique, different children, but every single one of them gets up and wants to go to school. And every month that this drags on without resolution, it concerns me that there's, that that could change. And I, I just really want to emphasize that I would like our teachers to have a contract as soon as possible. My daughter has come with me, she wrote a little something she wanted to share, so I just wanted, I hope you guys would listen to her as well.
My name is Ellie Pritchard, I live at 534 Lowell Street, and I'm a sixth grader at the Galvin. Hi. Today, what, what have we gathered to talk about? Our teachers, our mentors, our instructors, our guides. They have shown me wisdom beyond the books and gifted me a sense of pride in what I have learned. Schoolwork takes up, takes up about forty hours a week for students, and my teachers have made those hours worthwhile. They're the heart and soul of the twelve-hundred-sixty days I've spent in the classroom, and I am proud to say they are everything I could ask for. The teachers care about their students, and they helped me and everyone I know truly flourish, whatever that flourish is. Our experiences make us who we are, and I am better from my experiences with these teachers. Thank you for your time.
Good to see you.
No worries.
Was there anybody else from the public? Okay, that will close that section off, and we'll move on to Student Advisory Council. They sent you all by yourself again?
Hi, everyone. As some of you might know, there's been recently, like, a lot of achievements in our school academically. A few of our teams have just, like, made the postseason, like, boys hockey, girls hockey, boys basketball. Other sports that do not, like, have a traditional postseason, like, track and wrestling and boy swimming, like, have also found success too. So that's something, like, good to report that we have going on. Moving on to, like, more in the school, like, during the day, there's different, like, sessions going on, like, college career and, like, grief and anxiety, like, with Ms. Burns in her room, like, different times of the day, there's different sessions. Also, other things are coming up too, like, like that during the day, with MCAS next month for sophomores, and a Career to Life Fair, I think it's called. It's for seniors, and it's, like, during the MCAS week while the sophomores are testing, the seniors go and learn about, like, different life management skills, financial skills that they'll need. Also, report cards came out a few weeks ago, and February break was last week, and also soon is the senior show, and I believe it's next weekend, so the seniors are busy planning for that. Otherwise, there's nothing really, like, that completely interesting going on, but it's just kinda everyday life, so yeah.
Courses and studies all set?
Yeah.
Did you catch up with Mr. Robinson?
Yeah.
Is that helpful?
Hmm.
That's great.
Yeah.
Did anybody have any questions? I think you're doing well, it sounds like, every, every time I turn around, it seems like one of our teams is in, you know, came third in the state, first in the state, and a lot of playoffs, and they're doing very well, so, good for you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Logan.
Consent agenda.
Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2020, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the January 21st, 2020, school committee student services subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, motions made and seconded. All those in favor? Okay, they'll be unanimous. The chairman's comments, first, I wanted to be sure that everybody was aware that Senator Lewis had contacted me a week or two ago, and looking to set up a forum to explain for the, for the general public about Chapter 70 funding, how the Student Opportunity Act is folding into that, and also be available to answer funding questions about a new or renovated Wakefield Memorial High School. So he has committed to Monday, March 16th, we're gonna hold the forum in the Savings Bank Theater at 7:00 PM, and there'll be Facebook postings and flyers going around, and if anybody wants to help promote that, that date, make sure that the public is well-informed, that would be helpful. I'm gonna take one thing out of order that is on your list, Doug, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. In your packet, you received a, an updated job description. As you know, Judy has resigned, and so Doug and I wanted to go through and update the job description, we haven't looked at it in a long time. There's a, there's a slight title change, we're trying to be more descriptive in, in the roles and responsibilities within the job description itself, and we'd like to get this disposition posted, and I'm looking for an approval of the updated job description.
Move that the school committee approve the updated job description for the secretary and communications liaison of the school committee as presented.
Second.
Okay, did anybody have any questions? Looks good, okay. All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. And we can move on to the superintendent's section.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And so, just, just some updates, congratulations to the, the girls hockey team that lost a tough one this afternoon. It's a double overtime loss, but they've had a terrific season. They're co-champs of the Middle Sex League, and it's my understanding that Abby Boudreaux had just an amazing, amazing game, and I think the boys' game is still in session right now, so, but that's just, I got a quick update before we, we just came in, we just left one meeting and just came to this. So that was, that's just a quick update. Jumping into my list of topics, just a very quick budget update. First of all, Christine Befagni couldn't be here this evening, she had a family commitment, so she apologized, but I can kind of pass on the comments. And so, she and I have done, I think, a great deal of work over the February break, preparing the budget and creating some, some different scenarios, and we will present the superintendent's proposed budget on, on March 10th, which is the first school committee meeting in March. And so, I'm also going to be working with Chris Callanan, just to kind of figure out our, our public meeting after that, and, and that timeline, but that will be published as well in, in our March 10th meeting.
I would expect it would be the 24th.
And so, that, that's a question that I'd love to just talk more about, and so...
So not both on the same night?
No.
Okay.
It has to be at least seven days.
Yeah, because of the public hearings.
Yep, okay.
Right, and so, right, and so, it has to be at least seven days. So the soonest that we could meet for a public comment would be the 18th.
Okay.
If we present on the, on the 10th.
Okay.
So, it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, and so that's one of the things that I need to talk to Chris about, because if we could do a public comment on the 18th, which would be a Wednesday, it'd be a relatively short meeting, and then vote on the, on the following school committee meeting, that would give us all of April to work with FinCom and Town Council, and kind of let them hear fully, you know, what the budget is, what the priorities are, and why we're seeking what we're seeking.
Yes.
But that's something that, that we can work on, and will be presented in the, in the next school committee meeting. And so, we're also prioritizing not only the, the budget, and we're gonna break it out the same way that we've done in the past, we're gonna break out as kind of the cost for personnel, the cost for operating expenses, and then the cost, the associated cost for special education. And we'll, we'll kind of do a, kind of an in-depth look at, you know, the new positions that we're seeking as well. And so, and I think that that comes directly from feedback that we've gotten from a number of different sources, one being the, 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 our subcommittee, Amy, and, and the other being feedback that we've gotten from faculty and staff as well. So, more to follow there, but that's just a quick update on, on the budget. In terms of the 2021 calendar, I've, I've passed out the most updated 2021 calendar. I'd like to thank Cara Morrow, our assistant superintendent. I also need to thank the WBA leaders and Will Kevin Aris for all of your feedback on the calendar as well. And so, I feel like this is our, this is, I'm really pleased with what we were able to create here. I think we were able to, to compromise in a few sections and really minimize a number of half-days, especially in November. This past year, we had four half-days in November, and it made the month really choppy, and I think it was difficult for teachers, difficult for parents. And this year, I think what we've been able to do is compromise and use part of the Professional Development Day for conferences, and also some other time later in the month. But we will be starting our first day for teachers, will be September 2nd and 3rd, and then we'll have our Friday, and then, then students will start their first day on September 8th, which is the Tuesday after Labor Day. I also need to communicate to everyone that might be viewing tonight, and to all parties that, you know, this calendar is different than our past few years, because we do not have Learn Anywhere, and we're adding five days, so we're, we're planning for 185 days in the event that we may have snow days. That could go down, or it could go up, but we're hoping that it goes down, really, truth be told. But, but that's, if sort of people are looking at, and they're saying we're going later, not necessarily, it all depends on, on the weather, and the reason that is, is because Learn Anywhere, based on feedback that we've gotten from Commissioner Riley, will not be continued, right? So, so that's a piece. The other piece of information that I need to share this evening, or I should, we're seeking a motion for the calendar, I don't know if anyone has any questions before I move on on my list.
Do you have a motion for us, anyone?
Move that the school committee approve the 2020, 2021 Wakefield Public Schools calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, well, were there any questions, discussion? I think it looks good. We haven't had any, any calls from the public about, you know, any concerns, I think people just wanted to know what it was, but...
So, we did, we did get some feedback. Suzie, you sent a note on highlighting some of the holidays?
Yes.
And I think what we're gonna do, Suzie, and what we're talking about, we got feedback from several stakeholders involved, and really being able to identify holidays. So I think what we're gonna do is on the back page, or page two of this calendar, is to provide a list of all of the holidays that come from the Department of Education, and, you know, we're seeing a lot of districts doing that, just to make everyone aware when the holidays are, right?
Yeah, I was hoping for something visual, just so that when someone is referring to the calendar, that it, it pops of, like, oh, that, that one's circled, or however you could visually call it out, because of the, the, the expectation that there's no homework given, and that there's no tests, and that there's no tryouts, and that there's no games, right? Just that that doesn't get missed, because if this is the calendar that people are looking at to make sure that they're not scheduling something on a half-day or something, it would be nice for it to pop versus being in a list that you then have to turn over the page and be like, so when is the Jewish holiday, or when is Good Friday, right? Because, so, I just, I would like to see it be something visual, and maybe not color coding, because that implies that there, we're not in school.
Right.
And, and so, could it be a circle or something?
It could, it absolutely could be.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that we, that we make it as easy as possible.
One, one thing that I think is easy to miss, is especially with, with the Jewish holidays, is they, they start the night before, so, like, we have Rosh Hashanah as the 18th through 20th, does it start the night of the 18th, or does it start the night of 17th? That's what's always unclear to me.
So, I, I think it depends on, on the year, but we always, we always...
How do you identify?
Right, and so, that's the dilemma, like, how do you shade that on, on a calendar? So, what we would do, and what the administrators done, and I know the teachers do this as well, is, you know, there's a common communication that goes out that says that starts at sundown on this day, ends at sundown on this day. Right? And so, so, but, but I do think, you know, Suzie, I think we could look into the possibility of, of, you know, creating a circle or something around the date that might, you know, prompt people to look at page two or something to that effect.
Yep.
I think it's good feedback.
I also think that if you're looking at the, the list of, of holidays that Desi recognizes, it's many, you know, like, lots.
Yeah.
And, and so, you know, there might be some that we pick out based on our population in Wakefield, but having on the backside, you know, just sort of an understanding that there might be a holiday for, you know, Orthodox Christians, or, you know, and there are likely to be families in our community that have it, but, but it might get kinda crazy-looking, right?
If we have them all on there.
If we have them all, so, I definitely would love to have something on the back, like you're suggesting, yeah.
Can it still be visual and on the back?
I don't see why not.
Like Suzie's suggesting, something visual, but...
Highlighted for, for Wakefield?
Right.
Yeah, I think we could.
And also, in regards to the holidays, I think that's a good idea, to kind of put something on the back, but also maybe, like, the half-days as well, is it, could there be something on the back that would show how many half-days we have, kind of as a summary, to summarize, like, so parents can kind of just read on the back what days are actually listed, as opposed to kind of going through the calendar and trying to figure out which days...
Yeah, they're already, they're already in the margin.
Yes.
And they're already color-coded on the calendar, but if it's helpful to have them highlighted on the back, I don't see why...
Just half-days with a list of...
I think we could do that.
Just to help families who need...
Yeah.
And school by school, right? Because sometimes it's different for the elementary versus middle school.
Different calendar-free school.
No, I'm not suggesting that. But I, I know that there's been confusion around the elementary has a half-day, and the high school...
Well, like, November 18th is only...
Right.
Got it.
Right, it's more around the conferences, I think, maybe, is when that is problematic, so...
Right.
Yeah, no, I...
There's a lot to have to manage, and I get that.
And that's usually when, and that's usually when there is half-days per school, just for parent-teacher conferences, right?
Right, exactly, yeah.
It's not like for PD or anything like that.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm even looking at the November 3rd, and I'm not understanding what that means. Is it tr, because it says, no school, students, staff, PD...
So, we talked about this today, this was a, we talked about this at length.
[laughing]
So, one of the questions was, and it's a, someone asked, because that's a PD day, it's also a voting day, and we're using that year, this, this day differently than we have in years past, to try to clean up the number of half-days that we've had in November. So we're using this from, November 3rd for multiple things, so someone said, well, can we just, you know, shade it on the diagonal? And, and we haven't, we haven't quite mastered, we haven't quite mastered how to shade that on the diagonal yet, but, so, but there...
It's still full day off.
But there are a lot of things happening that day, so...
Right, so there's no school, and then it's PD in the morning, conferences in the afternoon...
So it's a voting day, it's an election day, it's a PD day, and there are conferences happening that day.
But conferences are only for the high school and elementary school, not the Galvin?
Correct. Well, voting is happening at the Galvin, so we can't...
You can't do conferences that day.
Right, 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 right.
Because it says, staff, PD, full-day Galvin, so that means it's a full day of...
PD, so they'll be at the hills, but they'll be at the high school for PD, right? Yeah.
And then when will the Galvin conferences be at the Galvin?
On the 18th.
Oh, okay, right underneath, okay, got it.
Pre-K, eight, right?
Uh, 11-18?
Yeah.
Early release conference, back through eight.
So, so we'll, so we'll break this out, so that, so that people know, and so, but in regard to the color coding, I think this might be as good as we can get it right now. Right now, we haven't, we might have to consult, you know, Morgan Ginotti to, in, in our art department, to make more, a better graphic for us, or a better design, but, but I think that that's where we're at right now. But if, if the cup is half-full, I think a lot of people have gotten eyes on this, we've gotten a lot of really valuable feedback, you know, with compromise in some different spaces, and if you look at, one of the things that we've been talking about is time on learning. I think this, this is a remarkably improved calendar from the November calendar and from the whole year calendar that we had last year. So more to follow, with the exception of the five days at the end for snow days, yeah. But I, I think it's a good, yeah.
Sorry, one more question.
No, no, go ahead.
So you don't have a separate staff calendar? Like, I know this is, this is really district, but there's not a, a separate calendar that you work off with a staff that's a little bit more detailed in terms of PD, or, I'm just thinking in terms, like, even, even holidays on the, so that they're informed with, you know, what we were just talking about earlier.
Yeah.
And because sometimes it's, it's really on that end where we might see some discrepancies.
I, I think that that communication comes from central office, and I also think that that's, I think teachers develop their own calendars, and I think they're also developed at schools as well, but this is the guide.
Okay, all right, so stuff does fall down from there, okay.
It does, it does.
Good.
Right.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded, are those in favor? We have a calendar.
So, SEEM Collaborative Budget and Annual Report, I believe that I've shared that with everybody, if you need a copy, I have just a, kind of highlights of just the annual budget and kind of where we're at. So, we are part of a 11-member group that is, that are, that are primary members at SEEM, a number of other different districts access services through SEEM, and so SEEM currently has just over 300 students that they're working with on a number of different sites, and I say a number because I don't have a firm number right now, because that number's changing, because they're, look, they're moving sites, and we'll have a, a better snapshot of that in the spring. But their, their overall budget is $33 million. It's going up in FY '21 by 2.77%, and members are, are kind of basically, we pay a member per the number of students that access services, and so, there's an increase in member services by 3.66% for us here in Wakefield, which, you know, is, is about $300,000, is what we pay to have, to get support for the students that need support through SEEM Collaborative. And so, to be honest, it's really a wonderful resource for us, I think we have a terrific working relationship with them, but part of my responsibilities as being a school committee member, not a school committee member, excuse me, superintendent in a member district is to serve on their board, and, and I also approve, as a part of a group like this committee, their annual budget, so, but my responsibility is also to bring it back to this, to this group, so it's not something that you need to vote on, but more or less need to be informed of what the increases are, what the costs are, how many students are going there, and, and what that looks like. I don't know if people have questions about that?
Did you say $33 million?
Correct.
For 360 kids?
300 students.
Yeah.
That's like a $190,000 kid.
Yeah, 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 and so, they, the services that they provide are services that, that traditionally can't be, or are, are cost prohibitive to provide in, in public districts, right? And so, which is why we've kind of band together with a number of other districts to create this, this collaborative, right? Or be part of this collaborative. Ann?
Can you remind me, do we, we, do we pay a membership fee, which I think you attributed to, or, and/or does that include the kids that we then place there, or is that an additional fee?
So, I, I think what there are, there's a percentage that people pay in tuition, right, to go there, and then member districts pay a membership fee, which is nominal, it's very small, but then, if you have students going there, you then pay a tuition rate. And really, for us, the, in the difference between, there's a little bit of a difference between, that, or the increase is different this year, but non-member districts pay a higher tuition than member districts.
Okay, that's worth...
Right? But yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I don't know if, if you need any other information, or you have questions about that, I'd be happy to provide whatever you feel like you need offline. And so, moving on, just a Blatts Field update, and so, softball will be starting the 16th, and so, it's exciting.
Two weeks?
So two weeks. So they will be starting, they'll be starting indoors, right? And so everyone, all spring sports mostly, will be starting indoors, with the exception of track, and, because they're outside all the time, rain, sleet, snow, they're like mailmen, and women, right? And so, but I spoke with Dennis Fazio, and Brendan was gonna be here tonight to talk about Blatts, but he is at our postseason play, right? And so, I, I talked with Dennis Fazio this week, and he has said that he is anticipating that Blatts will be ready for opening day, and so, which would be fantastic for us.
What is that?
Opening day, I wanna say, is April 16th? So I think the first week in April, they have a scrimmage, but I think their first game might be the 16th. Do you know, Ann?
No, it just, I know that tryouts start on the March 16th.
Right.
So that just seems like a long time before opening day.
Right, so I think it's a, I think first game is a month out.
Okay.
Right?
It'd be on Thursday?
What's that?
That would be on Thursday?
Yeah. I think, that's, that's the date that Brendan shared with me earlier, and so, you know, if, if, so in, in talking with Dennis Fazio, he had said that they gotta put down the clay and kind of laser-grade the infield, and he said that we might not have roofs on the dugouts, so it won't be, there, there are parts that will still need to be worked on, but he believes that it, it will be done. And he, he prefaced all that by saying, you know, if it rains for three weeks, Doug, all bets are off, right? He said, you know, he thinks the whole start of the whole spring season will be delayed.
If, if, if snow ends up arriving in March?
We hope not. But, but that's where we're at there.
Doug, do you know, will the scoreboard be done also?
So, one of the questions was the electrical, and so, Bob is on it, you know, and I, and I think...
Bob Burnett?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and he's a force.
Yep.
And so, and I think, you know, I think that they're doing everything they can do to make sure that it's in, you know, I think one of the questions is the electrical, right? Do we go underground, do we go overhead? And so I got a whole walkthrough on this today, it was, I, it was way more, way more information than I gave you, on the electrical for the scoreboard, but I think that the plan is to have it in, yes, yeah. And so, Dennis Fazio is also creating a kind of a ramp for, for ADA accessibility, he's, and he's really, he's taking this on like this is his... He's, and he's really, he's taking this on like this is his, like, like, he's a, he's a partner and collaborator with Bob Burnett, right, and, and David Story, so, um, so that's, that's where we're at with Blatts.
Is it, is it the DPW going on?
Um, yes, yes. So, you gonna call a favorin' over there? So, the smile is telling over there. So, that's, that's just where we're at. And, uh, and, and Chris, the last item was the, the school committee secretary, which Chris already took out of order, so that does it for me.
Great.
Thank you.
And we had no gifts, and Christine will bring our, uh, financial, things to our next meeting. Brings us to the subcommittee reports. Um, the finance and facilities committee, uh, we, Amy and I did accompany Doug and Christine, uh, to the, the FinCom, uh, was it two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, just had a preliminary discussion with them about, uh, you know, the, the, the goals of, 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 of the, the upcoming budget. Uh, and we also have posted a meeting for, uh, March fourth, Wednesday, Wednesday morning at seven thirty, to, uh, to review, uh, what we hope are final figures. Uh, labor and personnel, we're meeting, what's tomorrow?
We're meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Okay.
Feeling like we're moving in a, in a real positive path.
Okay. Agree.
We had, yeah, an all-day meeting a, a week or so ago, right, with the two of them?
Two Saturdays.
A couple Saturdays ago, yep.
So, meetings seem to be going well. Uh, student services?
We have not met, um, and we do plan to try and get together at some point soon.
Okay. And policy?
So, we met, um, earlier tonight, and we will have two policies to put on the table. Actually, not two, multiple policies to put on the table at the next meeting. So, there were some state policy updates that came down from, um...
DESI?
Yeah, from DESI. Okay, so, um, there's some state policies that we have, uh, legal looking at, to check whether we have a current policy or not. If we don't, we'll create one. If we do, we're gonna update it as necessary. And we think that that will be relatively easy work, so we'll bring it and put it on the table for, uh, review, starting, put it on the table on the tenth for a vote on the twenty-fourth. Um, we are also going to be putting the acceptable use of technology policy on the table for review on, um, at our next meeting on the tenth. Um, we've made some good progress on that, and we're ready to have, well, almost ready, to have you guys, um, take a look at that. Um, so that'll also be put on the table for consideration on the tenth.
Is there anything hanging out there from, that we have on the table we need to vote on, if I could remember?
No, no, we voted on everything. Um, one thing that we did talk about tonight was the idea of, as part of our communications, um, arm of our work is starting to take a look at the idea of a new member handbook, and bringing a working draft to the team to take a look at, um, for, um, for consideration. Um, and so, we're gonna spend our next meeting kind of talking about that, as part of our communication piece.
New school committee member handbook?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Um, based on documents that Dorothy Presser gave us at our...
After our retreat.
Uh, retreat, that was the word, yeah. Um, so, we're gonna use that as a basis. We're gonna review those, and, um, and then bring forward kind of what we're thinking about, for the, for the committee to look at.
Good idea.
Um...
I'm glad you have nothing to do.
Yeah, we think that's important.
No, 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 it sounds, it sounds like you're very busy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, um, so, lastly, um, kind of separate from, um, our meeting tonight, uh, I met with, so this, oh, you know what, this'll be my, my other update, never mind. That's the end of my subcommittee update.
Okay.
Sorry.
Future dates and agenda items. So, our next regularly scheduled meeting would be Tuesday, March tenth, here at WCAT.
Yeah.
Uh, Doug and I will talk about that eighteenth, uh, date. I don't know if the studio is available that day for, for a public hearing or not. Uh, we might possibly have to have it in a different location. This will, that'll be, to be, to be determined.
And that date is when we will be presented with the budget?
No, March tenth will be the presentation of the superintendent's budget.
The eighteenth will be a public hearing.
Yes, right, so the budget will be presented to us on the tenth, and then possibly the eighteenth, public comment.
Public comment.
Okay, got it.
Right, and then the week after that, we would, we would vote.
Okay.
And that, that, if we could do that, that would allow us kind of quite a bit of time to work with town council and FinCom, right?
Thank you.
The correct term is, um, public hearing.
What did I say, comment?
Yeah, that's what they're just, we have to, when, when we post it in the, in the newspaper, with this language we have to use.
Got it.
Okay. Uh, school committee comments. You wanna start? Start with Tom, you've got nothing, Colleen?
No comments, thank you.
Ann?
I wanted to thank the Pritchards for coming. Thank you so much. Um, I've already forgotten your name.
Ellie.
Ellie.
And Katie.
And Katie. Um, really, uh, hearing your concern, and, and just want you to know that we are working super hard to get this resolved. Yeah, thank you.
Suzie?
So, my other update was, um, I met today with Cara and, um, Jason Pavy about, uh, the eighth grade civics projects. Um, and that was in the context of the liaison role that I play with the environmental sustainability committee. Um, and so, I've been, I've met with Jason and Cara a couple times now, of just trying to figure out, how can we connect the dots between that proj- those projects that are happening for eighth graders, and where there are particular topics that are applicable to that group? Could we kind of connect some dots and get people kind of connected? Cause the way that those projects are working is, um, they developed their idea, they did research, and now they're doing kind of, how, how might I execute on a project? Knowing that they full well aren't going to necessarily be able to execute on something, but how would they? What would the process look like? Who would they need to get involved with? And so, um, there's a giant list of, of projects, some of which have an environmental slant. Um, some that, um, the reason, one of the reasons I bring it up here, is some of them have, um, more of a school committee slant. Um, and so, there's, um, uh, things like later start, uh, time, uh, for high schools. It's, some kids have that as one of their, um, their topics. Um, and so, uh, I'm gonna be working with Cara and Jason, of just trying to figure out, how can we make connections between, um, us and the school committee, um, the eighth graders, and the, um, sustainability, um, environmental sustainability committee, um, other town council members, just helping kind of navigate a little bit, um, and so, and, and to try and make that as efficient as possible. Um, Jason talked a little bit about trying to bring people in potentially, um, to school to talk to multiple students at a time. Um, uh, sometimes they'll reach out via email, um, sometimes they'll wanna maybe have a phone call, and so, we're gonna try to help coordinate that. Um, it'll all be, um, kind of wrapped up in a civics day showcase that they'll do in May. Um, the date is not firm yet, but, um, I, I think it would be great if some of us could make it to that, and, and hear, um, some of the teams kind of give their presentations, cause there's lots of really great topics that these, these, um, these kids are gonna be focused on. So, more to come on that.
Great. Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
So, um, when they showcase their project, is it as a team, or are they doing this individually?
It's as a team. So, they, they're, the, the, the project is a trifold, that will kind of cover those three phases of, well, actually, you know what, now that I say that, I'm not sure that that's, so, I don't actually know the answer to that question. Because it's who I am as kind of a student, so it may be individual.
I can always ask my eighth grader.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Brian might know, although Brian may not know about this third piece.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a mix, depending on if, if they have students doing a similar topic, or they partner up.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, I know that they definitely did pieces of it together. I just don't know if the trifold and the presentation will be as a group or as individuals. Cause part of the project was thinking about you as a citizen, and kind of who you are and how you fit.
Right.
Um, and so...
Thank you.
Um, yeah.
Um, so, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I talk again? Well, this, what you were saying, um, Suzie, just reminded me that, um, I, I, I just wanna say how wonderful Wakefield, uh, is, is in terms of developing opportunities for students. Uh, last night, I attended and presented at the town council, along with, um, Catherine Dingra, and one of our junior students here, Eric Keef. Um, and unfortunately, Liz Parsons wasn't able to come, but we've been working really hard on, uh, putting together what initially was called a youth commission, and, uh, it's now going to be youth council, and it was approved by, uh, town council last night. And it's going to allow our, uh, seventh through twelfth graders, um, there's gonna be eleven kids, uh, in total, from that age group, as part of this youth council, which is actually going to be kind of on par with, like, Human Rights Commission, um, and all of the commissions and committees that the town has. Uh, and it's allowing the, the, the students and the young people a voice in government, um, being the voice of other kids in the community who might have ideas to, you know, bring forth in whatever venue, something that makes them happy, something that makes their, you know, siblings happy. Um, and also, it gives the adults who work in government a place to go to when they, when they really need to have the perception of, of the youth in our community. So, that in, in, you know, sort of in, along with the civic project. And, and even the sustainability committee has like these four amazing students who are all in. Um, I'm just feeling really proud of this community and working, you know, that we've worked so hard to really allow these opportunities for, for these kids. Um, so anyway, that's my talking again, so thank you for allowing me. I'm just really excited about it, yeah.
Cause she took your time.
Thank you, yeah. And actually, I'm so glad that you, that you mentioned it, cause I, I think it's a great thing. It sounds wonderful. Um, and please share us, um, more information as it, you know, kind of grows into, um, an actual...
Actual council, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, thank you. Yes, thank you. Um, and thank you Katie and Ellie for, um, coming to our meeting tonight and sharing your thoughts. Um, I think, I think you did a great job, so, thank you. That's it.
Okay, um, the only thing I, I wanted to just mention is, I, I, I'm gonna be away unfortunately, but I believe Friday night is, uh, the West Spelling Bay?
Yeah.
Am I correct? Are, are any members going?
I'm going.
Okay, good. So, you have to let us know how that goes.
That's gonna be awesome.
Okay.
You're gonna win.
Of course, we have to redeem ourselves. We won the inaugural Spelling.
With that, we'd, uh, take a motion to adjourn, please.
Move that school, oh, sorry.
So, sorry. I just wanted to, to, to just let, um, our audience know that the, um, The Cover of Life is, is playing Wednesday and Thursday evening this week, at the Galvin Auditorium at seven PM. So, it's, uh, it's, it's, I think it promises to be a great take, and I think our students, um, are gonna, you know, I think that it will be great, so I recommend it, yeah. That's it, that's it for me, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of February twenty fifth, twenty fifth, twenty twenty.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Motion adjourned.